Manny Claus.
Manny Claus.
No, you can't. You can be down.
Do I have to beg?
Do I have to beg?
Just do that to scare the people in the front who aren't looking. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to tonight's special town meeting. I'm your town moderator, Bill Govea. Next to me is our town clerk, Lucia Longhurst. And tonight we're going to conduct the business of your town. I would like you to please, I would like to begin the meeting by please asking you to all stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin onto the warrant, just like to briefly run over some of the rules that we'll be operating under this evening. First of all, I would ask everyone to please find a seat. There are plenty of them, standing on the side, standing in the back. Sometimes it's hard to hear and it creates noise, so we would ask you to please make sure you find a seat. If you are not a registered voter in the town of Norton, not a registered voter, then you must sit in the seats marked "Non-voters" section up there to my right, sort of in front of me. If you are a registered voter, don't sit there, because if you do, your vote won't be counted when you raise your hand, because that's where the non-registered voters are. So, we ask you to please observe that. If you wish to address this meeting tonight, you must do so only after being recognized by the moderator. There are, there's a microphone up here, there are two microphones in the back. If you wish to be recognized, just proceed there and please patiently wait for me to recognize you. We're stressing tonight because the, you know, the minutes that the town clerk takes have to be detailed, so when you speak to the meeting, every time you speak to the meeting, please state clearly your name and your address, so that we can record it for the record. Please try to keep your remarks brief and to the point, and confine them only to the matter under discussion at the time. All speakers this evening will be treated with respect and courtesy by the moderator and by everyone else in the room. No speaker will be allowed to use the meeting for personal attacks on any individual. All remarks will be directed to the moderator, and while I will allow questions to be asked, I will not allow cross-examination type of discussion from the floor. In recognizing people to speak, I will endeavor to call upon those who have not yet spoken on a particular topic before recognizing those who have already spoken. So if you've already spoken on one topic, and then you get in line again, and there's, you're up to the microphone, and there's someone behind you who hasn't spoken yet on that topic, I might recognize them, if I remember, because you have spoken on the topic and they haven't, and so I try to do that in fairness. If a, I will recognize motions to move the question tonight if we get to that point, but I reserve the right to decide in my discretion as moderator that a subject has not been discussed enough, and refuse such a motion if I feel it's the right thing to do. If a standing vote is required, or a ballot vote is required tonight, you'll be given instructions on how to proceed. Otherwise, all our votes will be done by a show of hands. If you wish to make an amendment to any motion this evening, you must do so in writing and present it to the moderator and the clerk. Please prepare your amendment and bring it up here. If you are moving an article that has not been recommended and moved by the Finance Committee, you must also present the motion in writing to the town clerk. I remind you all that no motion to reconsider any article will be accepted by the moderator until at least three articles following the article being reconsidered have been acted upon at this meeting. Since we only have five, that means that basically after the first article, you have to wait, and after the second one, it's fair game. I just tell you that because if the article is one of the last ones, and you vote on Article One, and then you go home, and you think you're all set, and then you read later on, after you, you know, after you settle down, that it was reconsidered later, and you come and yell at the moderator, "It's not my fault, it's your fault." There may be requests this evening to allow non-voters to speak on certain articles. This must be done by a motion voted upon by the meeting. While it is the right and the decision of the meeting to allow or not allow non-residents to speak, please keep in mind, they may have important information to add to the discussion. Generally, if people are representing companies or firms or experts that are before the meeting to try to give information, we do that, but it's not a free-for-all to just come if you're out of town, although frankly, I don't know why you'd come if you were out of town. All voters, all non-voters must make sure they catch the moderator's attention before being heard. Having said all that, I'll turn to our town clerk. Madam Clerk, is there a return on this warrant?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I have served this warrant by posting attested copies at Chartley Post Office, Norton Post Office, Norton Municipal Center, Norton Public Library, and three other public places within the limits of said town, 14 days at least before the time of holding in said meeting. Attest: Michael J. Mayor, Constable of Norton, date March 26, 2018.
Thank you. So, we will now begin with the articles on the warrant. Article One.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Rotandi, Chairman of the Finance Committee, Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee.
I move Article One as presented in the warrant.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the Article One is moved as presented in your warrant. These, this article seeks to pay unpaid bills from a prior fiscal year in the amounts listed and for the reasons listed. In one of my least favorite state laws of all time, approval of such an article for a previous year requires a nine-tenths majority vote. Since I am terrible at math, we will attempt to do that by either getting unanimous vote, or if the vote is not unanimous, then we will take a standing vote, because I have to be assured that it's a nine-tenths. Having said that, is there any discussion, any questions on Article One? Seeing no hands. All those in favor of Article One, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed, Article One passes by unanimous vote, as declared by the moderator. Article Two.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move Article Two as written in the warrant.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, Article Two, as you can read it, I'm going to ask, maybe I'll ask our, I don't know if it's our town manager or whoever wants to come up and just give a basic explanation of the article, so that we understand just what the article is. Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Moderator, we have a map up on the screen that you can see. This is a piece of property on Union Road, approximately three acres. It abuts the railroad tracks behind it, and Land Preservation Society owns land to the left side of the property line. And this property was part, was, is opposite where the ALI cleanup happened, and this was land that they also owned out there, and this land would be donated to the town, and it is clean land. It wasn't part of the ALI site.
Okay, and, and this, this, this article basically allows the town to take ownership of the property, is that correct?
This would give the selectmen permission to review all documents and accept the property if they believe it's, it's proper.
Are there any questions or comments on Article Two? Seeing no hands. All those in favor of Article Two, please raise your hands. All those opposed, Article Two passes by unanimous vote, as declared by the moderator. Article Three.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move Article Three as written in the warrant with two changes. In line number two, funds appropriated under Article Six of the May 12, 2014 Annual Town Meeting. And on line nine, additional sum of $900,000.
Okay, so Article Three has been moved with the change, it's as printed in your warrant with the exception, and then on line two, it should say, "Augment funds appropriated under Article Six" instead of Article Four. And down there, and down further, it's the sum is $900,000. Ladies and gentlemen, this article requires borrowing on behalf of the town if it's passed, so therefore, it will require a two-thirds majority vote for passage. I would seek someone from the town who wishes to come up and explain this to our voters, and our water commissioner, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Luke Grant, 210 North Washington Street. What this does, some years ago, as everybody remembers, we approved the initial $9 million-ish dollars for building a sand filter water treatment plant. The treatment plant's going to process 2.5 million gallons a day. What has happened over the permitting process, we are required to go through Mass Historic Commission. In that discovery period, there were significant archaeological artifacts discovered. It put our project back approximately 30 months. Just the rise, 5% a year rise in construction costs, coupled with the many, many, many tens and into hundreds of thousands of dollars for the actual archaeological testing, studies, sifting, so on and so forth, have required an additional $900,000 to build the project as we need. Obviously, everybody's experienced the dirty water, heard about the dirty water. This treatment plant will significantly increase the quality of the water in town. A question could come up that, well, are you going to come back for more money? We have a low bid. The project has gone out to bid. We have a low bid. It's 9.3 million. And to go ahead and hire the low bidder with everything that we need in this plant, we need a total of $900,000 to do this. Another question that might come up is, when does the treatment plant come online? And we, again, if we move to this construction schedule as soon as possible, it will come in line a year from this fall. It'll be fall of 2019. Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so this, this article basically calls for $900,000 to finish funding the building of the treatment plant? Would that be a fair summary?
Exactly.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on Article Three? Yeah, I'll, yes, I'll take the gentleman in the blue shirt, followed by the gentleman in the jacket.
My name is Paul Galant. I live at 40 Freeman Street. What's to guarantee that the low bid will be a competent contractor? I mean, if you're going to get your car fixed, you can get your car fixed at one place for $200, and another guy may want $300, but the quality of the $300 job might be much better.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Grant.
Thank you. That's an excellent question. In many cases, I think you, you would have a valid point. Number one, I'm pretty sure Massachusetts bid laws require us to take the low bidder. And number two, we're not doing a small thing. The people who are capable of bidding and performing this kind of work are at a certain level, and we know of the low bidders' work on other projects. They have done other similar-sized jobs with great success. So, it is a good point, but again, this is, this is very technical, high, high industrial work, and they're, they're very qualified.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, to back up what Mr. Grant said, I think the, the work is in the specs. When the bid is put together, it must be spec'd, it must be approved, and the bidders, all bidders, must meet all the specifications outlined in the bid. Is that right, Mr. Grant?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's how you get guaranteed. If they didn't meet the specs of the bid, the board would be unable to accept the bid. Yes, sir?
With all these delays that we've had...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Could you, could you tell us your name and address for the record, sir?
Greg Vincent, 23 Reservoir Street.
Thank you.
With all these delays we had in the building of this, the 30 months and such, and then all the monies expended for the historical digging, do we have any recourse on that? Is there, any, we can go for, retrieve monies for the money spent or lost for these delays, or for the digging of the historical?
Nope. It's, it's a requirement to file a permit in this place adjacent to Canoe River, the MHC, the Mass Historic Commission. It's, it's just part of the hurdles, burning hoops of fire, layers and layers and layers of things that we have to go through.
So they can really mess up a project adding considerable funds, costs to the project?
Have did.
With no recourse?
Have did, will, is what it is.
Is there any recourse on Mass DPW as far as getting some reimbursement? I know when the EPA did their study last fall, there was looking into some reimbursement for what we were hoping at the time, to get a temporary filtration system, and get the DPW to kick in, the state to kick in, to leave, instead of having to wait another two years, to leave some of our water problems now?
No, it, I'm, I'm with you. It would be nice, but again, as you may or may not know, the state entity is a very separate individual, and to go from one in response to what happened to the other is really not an option.
So we've, we've exhausted every recourse as far as getting any type of funding from other agencies?
What I'm being reminded of is that we have secured 2% funding from SRF on this treatment plant, so that really is as good as it gets. I mean, you all know what probably you're paying on your homes for mortgage rates. 2% is a heck of a rate. But there's no, there's no, there's no coming back from where we are. You got to go through the process, and me to you, if there were something significant, you know it's Native American artifacts that they were looking for. If there was something significant over there, we would all say, "Boy, it's good they found it." I'm not, I'm not against the process. I'm just, I'm sorry it took so long, but there's not a lot we can do other than plod merrily ahead and get some clean water in these mains. In that discovery period, there were significant archaeological artifacts discovered. It put our project back approximately 30 months. Just the rise, 5% a year rise in construction costs, coupled with the many, many, many tens and into hundreds of thousands of dollars for the actual archaeological testing, studies, sifting, so on and so forth, have required a, an additional $900,000 to build the project as we need. Obviously, everybody's experienced the dirty water, heard about the dirty water. This treatment plant will significantly increase the quality of the water in town. A question could come up that, well, are you going to come back for more money? We have a low bid. The project has gone out to bid. We have a low bid. It's 9.3 million. And to go ahead and hire the low bidder with everything that we need in this plant, we need a total of $900,000 to do this. Another question that might come up is when does the treatment plant come online? And we, again, if we move to this construction schedule as soon as possible, it will come in line a year from this fall. It'll be fall of 2019. Mr. Moderator.
Okay. So this, this article basically calls for $900,000 to finish funding the building of the treatment plant? Would that be a fair summary?
Exactly.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on Article Three? Yeah, I'll, yes, I'll take the gentleman in the blue shirt followed by the gentleman in the jacket.
My name is Paul Galant. I live at 40 Freeman Street. What's to guarantee that the low bid will be a competent contractor? I mean, if you're going to get your car fixed, you can get your car fixed at one place for $200 and another guy may want $300, but the quality of the $300 job might be much better.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Grant.
Thank you. That's an excellent question. In many cases, I think you, you would have a valid point. Number one, I'm pretty sure Massachusetts bid laws require us to take the low bidder. And number two, we're not doing a small thing. The people who are capable of bidding and performing this kind of work are at a certain level. And we know of the low bidder's work on other projects. They have done other similar sized jobs with great success. So it is a good point. But again, this is, this is very technical, high, high industrial work, and they're, they're very qualified.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, to, to back up what Mr. Grant said, I think the, the work is in the specs. When the bid is put together, it must be spec'd, it must be approved, and the, the bidders, all bidders must meet all the specifications outlined in the bid. Is that right, Mr. Grant?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's how you get guaranteed? If they didn't meet the specs of the bid, the, the board would be unable to accept the, the bid? Yes, sir.
With all these delays that we've had...
I'm sorry. Could you, could you tell us your name and address for the record, sir?
Greg Vincent, 23 Reservoir Street.
Thank you.
With all these delays we had in the building of this, the 30 months and such, and then all the monies expended for the historical digging, do we have any recourse on that? Is there, any, any, we can go for, retrieve monies for the money spent or lost for these delays or for the digging of the historical?
No. It's, um, it's a requirement to file a permit in this place adjacent to Canoe River, the MHC, the Mass Historic Commission. It's, it's just part of the hurdles, burning hoops of fire, layers and layers and layers of things that we have to go through.
So they can really mess up a project adding considerable funds, costs to the project?
Have did.
With no recourse?
Have did, will, is what it is.
Is there any recourse on Mass DPW as far as getting some reimbursement? I know when the EPA did their study last fall, there was looking into some reimbursement for what we were hoping at the time to get a temporary filtration system and get the DPW to kick in, the state to kick in, to leave, instead of having to wait another two years, to leave some of our water problems now?
Right. No, it, I'm, I'm with you. It would be nice, but again, as you may or may not know, the state entity is a very separate individual, and to go from one in response to what happened to the other is really not an option.
So we've, we've exhausted every recourse as far as getting any type of funding from other agencies?
What I'm being reminded of is that we have secured 2% funding from SRF on this treatment plant, so that really is as good as it gets. I mean, you all know what probably you're paying on your homes for mortgage rates. 2% is a heck of a rate. But there's no, there's no, there's no coming back from where we are. You've got to go through the process. And me to you, if there were something significant, you know it's Native American artifacts that they were looking for. If there was something significant over there, we would all say, boy, it's good they found. I'm not, I'm not against the process. I'm just, I'm sorry it took so long, but there's not a lot we can do other than plod merrily ahead and get some clean water in these mains.
Have we exhausted anything's, anything else within town like sale of property or anything like that that the town owns perhaps to help make up some of the fund losses? I mean, I can think of one property right now. I mean, it's, it's the boat ramp that's never going to be built off of 140 that we bought five years ago.
Water and sewer is an enterprise fund, and town money cannot be used for water and sewer under that.
Okay. That answers that. That's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Kim Arena, 8 Fordham Drive. I'm confused by that last statement. Why are we here at town meeting appropriating funds for the Water and Sewer Commission's project if they're separate entities?
Well, what, what we're doing is you're allowing us to borrow. A borrowing has to be allowed by this forum. And then with the 2% SRF funding that I mentioned before, under the operating budget of the water department, we pay it back.
Okay. So...
But we need your authority to borrow the money, or the selectmen actually borrow the money.
Okay. So the money will not be paid back through tax dollars, but instead through our water fees?
That's correct. Tell, the water is, you can imagine the water you, you can imagine the water you...
Can I just remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones? As much as I love the Notre Dame fight song, I would rather just hear the, the young lady and Mr. Grant. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Grant, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Gervais. But, um, where was I? We are, you can imagine the water department as a, as a small business. It's a utility company funded by the revenues, pay, pay stuff, and we're going to borrow some money with the permission of the town body here, and then we're going to pay it back over years with the 2% loan.
Okay. And as you know, I've been very active and been coming to the meetings over the years. I'm very concerned about the fact that we have come back from 2013, certain amounts of money appropriated, and I understand things come up, and I understand the archaeological dig. But it was not until last fall, when the media got involved, thanks to some of us making some phone calls, that there seemed to be input from the state level. And this gentleman earlier, I'm sorry, right there, was talking about finding recourse or some sort of refunds or, or some money to pay us back because we've already been paying for this dirty water for years. Never mind my furnace and everything else that's been affected by it, not to mention any white clothes. Nobody in Norton has white clothes. And when I filed for an abatement on my water bill to pay for the whole house filter and the filtration that I'm going to need to buy through, for the next two years until, if this gets launched, it goes, I was denied that abatement. So I'm just, I feel like I've got a water gun to my head, I guess. We have to appropriate this money or authorize it because we need clean water in town. But I don't feel confident that this department, that this town, that we've done everything we should have, could have as far as working with the state, calling in the people. I mean, water is a necessity. We, nobody can live without it. And this has gone on, I've been in town for 22 years. It was moderate, minimal early on, but the past five years at least, it's been horrific. And it just feels like, oh, well, we can't, oh, this we can't. And then all of a sudden, the media and we get this local reps, state reps, and then Elizabeth Warren got involved, and boom, there's a movement. Are we really looking at everything we need to be looking at as far as getting money back?
Yeah, I, I think the answer, not for me, but the answer that's, that's come back is that no, there appears to be no way at present to get money back to people who have done that. Is that, Mr. Grant, is that an accurate answer right now?
Pretty much. What I'm going to say is, um, many of your points are well taken, but I, for one, have been on this for years, week in, week out. Not an occasional arrival at a meeting, not calling a senator, and no, thank you very much, Elizabeth Warren did nothing for this. Zero. If she wanted to help you find people of Norton, the time to do that was 29 months ago, to carry the ball. Many towns have multiple water treatment facilities. We don't have one yet. We needed one 10 years ago. The demand we have all placed on our wells has increased. That brings more iron and manganese into the wells, more into the system. There's no water gun to your head. Drill a well, buy a whole house filter, take what you need to get your water. We're trying our level best to get this done. I, I feel for all your whites. I feel for your washes. We do what we can, but it's always a money thing, it's always a time thing. Connections, I can't tell you the representatives, the state offices I've personally called over the years that I've been involved on this. So please excuse me if I get a little ruffled when you say, or when you imply, I haven't been doing enough, or we haven't been doing enough. That hasn't been happening. We've done our diligence, we've got this in front of you, and what I really want is a yes vote so we can proceed to break ground on this critical thing for our town.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Norton.
Hi. Joseph Norton, 19 Smith Street. I guess my comment is, why have we allowed this to go on and on and on? I've been in town for about 25 years, and I remember when I first moved here, there was a water crisis, and it just seems to be going on and on and on. And what I don't understand is, sir, I'm not sure, I know you're the water superintendent, why the selectmen do not have the oversight of the water department since they are the political people in town that we voted for? We didn't, you know what I'm saying? It seems like they, they're out of it. I know you're voted, you're voted also, but why are not the selectmen in charge of this?
I, I, I can answer that, Mr. Norton. The reason that the selectmen are not in charge of it is because a town meeting just like this a year or two ago voted against an article that would have made the water commissioners appointed and consolidated it under the Department of Public Works and then made it part of the overall town department. That article came before a town meeting, it would have accomplished what you said, and it was defeated by the town meeting.
Well, does that make sense?
I, my job is not to make sense. My job is just to run the meeting.
Well, I know it's not your job to make, but I just don't understand...
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Let me, let him finish, and then...
It's, it's just that, it just doesn't seem to make any, here we go with sense, the common sense again, that this has been going on and on, and the answer is to bring empty buckets to the town hall to fill them up with water. It's just, it's just crazy. And the amount of money's being spent on bottled water amongst everybody here in this room in the whole town, it's ludicrous. And I, I just don't get it. And what's even, so how long is this going to take? Even if this gets passed, when are we going to see the first drop of clean water out of the faucets? This is, this is 2018. When, when, if this gets approved today and we get started, what year is we, are we going to see clean water coming out of my faucet?
Fall of 2019.
When?
Fall, not this fall, a year from this fall.
So we got a long way to go yet.
If we do nothing, it won't improve.
And how long is it, is there a guarantee that this money that gets appropriate, gets passed today is going to be enough? Are you going to be coming back in six months or eight months or a year? We ran into a problem. We found another archaeological bone. We need more money.
That, that's a good point. Again, the archaeological studies are complete. We have sign-offs, or we could not get the 2% funding from SRF. And no, we should not come back for more money. We have our qualified bidder, and we're going to proceed. This is, this is the numbers. We all know construction has ifs. I mean, I, there's a 5% contingency, I don't know. But this is what we need to move forward.
Okay. And on the town end, is there a way that we can have a moratorium on any talk of a new town hall or a new, anything until this thing is done in case we need more money? We shouldn't be talking about a new town hall, spending millions of dollars for that. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay. We've got to, we've got to keep the discussion on the article here tonight. And that discussion is, should we vote yes on this article and proceed, or should we vote no and defeat it? So I'm, I'm allowing some leeway because frankly, if people have been putting up with dirty water for, for five years, then we can certainly put up with listening to them talk about it for a few minutes tonight. So I, I'm not stopping that, but let's try and keep the conversation specifically to the article under question, okay?
Well, but this pertains to the article.
A, you can make everything pertain, but you, you pertained a little too far. So let's, let's keep it more specifically. I'm not going to, I'm not going to entertain discussion on whether we put a moratorium on talking about a town hall or things like that. Let's talk about the pros and cons of passing this article, please.
Okay. I guess I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to go to the young lady over here, please?
Hi. My name is Lauren Duvall and live at 97 Barrow Street. My question is that we see this article here in front of us for the $900,000. There was talk when the EPA and DEP were involved that we got the, the water filling station, which was a topic that was brought up at the water department meeting. I heard something through Facebook, whatever, that if we were to temporarily rent the water filtration equipment for the town, the cost would be somewhere in the ballpark of 400, 450,000. If that is true, why did a question not make its way in front of all of us saying, do we want to pay for that so we can have clean water for a year and a half? Why are we not answering a question on that? You guys just decided that we don't want that because I know for my kids, I would gladly pay that and a million times more to make sure they're healthy and safe. And what this water is doing is not causing any of us to be any safer or healthier.
Mr. Grant, can you answer that, please?
We did look at the, I think they're transportable filtration systems, and what the $400,000 covers is the unit and some operation. It doesn't cover the construction of a drying bed and places for the significant water that gets processed and back flushed through. And as you may or may not, as you all may or may not know, the areas of our wells are all close to wet areas. So you can't just dump this siltated water back into the wet area. So you're going to need a huge drying bed to do it. So it's not just, and I'm not saying 400,000 is nothing, but it's not merely the 400,000. It's pro, I, I don't even want to...
What is the approximate number, then?
I couldn't, I couldn't throw it, design, construction, bidding, it's, it's a long...
Are we talking close to a million dollars, which is what we're answering? Because if you add up everything we buy with bottled water, our appliances being ruined, we would all gladly say, pay the money, we'll have clean water for a year and a half instead of not letting us choose at all.
It's, it's, it's more than the 400,000, and it sets this project back. So you're going to be working in the same exact area that the well filtration system would be trying to operate in. So now, if you can conceptualize with me, we have a little tiny approved triangle, if you will, that we can build our treatment plant in. So what has been suggested is find somewhere else to have this hokey, transportable filtration system, which will, will filter some water, but then create drying beds and a whole host of other issues to make it work. We looked at the cost benefit analysis and decided it wasn't worth it for your money.
Okay. All right. Oh, oh, oh.
That's, that's why you've charged us to...
Hold on. I'm still in charge. I can't be at home. I might as well be here. So let's, thank you for the question. Thank you for the answer. I'm going to recognize the lady in the pink sweatshirt who hasn't spoken yet.
Lynn Darling, 85 South Worcester Street. I'm not going to bore you with my water concerns. My only question is that after we spend $900,000 additional dollars, what else are we going to need to do to get clean water to South Worcester Street? One gentleman came to our house, told us it was our pipes on the street. They were old, they were giving us this dirty water. This was probably four, five years ago. So my question to you is, we spend this money, we get this water filtration plant up running? What then are you going to have to do with infrastructure to bring clean water to our house?
Exactly what we've been doing. Install mains when we can, flush the mains. It's, the problem is, I, it's, it's a bad analogy, but it's garbage in, garbage out.
Exactly.
Okay? We only have water that comes from our ground. That's what we have. If we supply the water that comes from our ground through this extensive filter, it's going to come out much better. And yes, we will have to do a little catch-up on the infrastructure, flushing, there are various means of cleaning the mains, but you have to start with something good to put in the water.
You flush down on South Worcester Street all the time. I think if I'm going to do laundry, you're out flushing. I'm not, I'm not complaining, but it's frustrating. So I guess I'd like to know, are we looking at another million dollars that we need to put into our infrastructure?
The pipes...
You have to have an idea of what the pipes look like in Norton. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying you have to promise me a million's going to do it. I just want to hear from you that this is the beginning to solve our water problems. We still need to plan to change things in Norton along our infrastructure.
If I can to try to proceed, and please, if I'm not saying your question correctly, please correct me. But are you, what you're basically asking is beyond this action tonight, is there an organized plan to better the pipes and, and the carry system going forward?
Exactly.
Maintenance plan for the town?
Exactly.
Okay. So I think that's what she's asking, Mr. Grant.
Right. And we absolutely are. Just recently, at the past, most recent town meeting, we approved a million dollars for a new section of our water main on Reservoir Street. We continually maintain, upgrade, and replace areas that need attention.
And how do you determine that, I guess is what I'm asking?
Honestly, the area on Reservoir Street that I think is in question is an older, problematic asbestos main, and that has been frequently breaking. And so we look at that and say, we're just going to put in however many feet of pipe. And you, you've got to go on what works. And am I saying that the, the water filtration system will be the last upgrade the water department ever does to the system? No. But this is what we need.
But you do have a plan?
Absolutely.
So if I came down to the water department, I can see what the plan is?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The gentleman in the blue.
Paul Galant, 40 Freeman Street, again. Mr. Grant, I, I hear everything you're saying, and I, we all feel your pain with regard to, with regard to the word setback and delay. I think those terms kind of make your blood boil. My question is, that said, what type of deadlines are guaranteed in the contract? And if deadlines are not met, what kind of financial penalties are there going to be for the contractors?
There are delay penalties in the contract for the contractor. And they're, they're significant because of the scope of this thing and the value. It's obviously, it's not written on a napkin. These, these have been tried and true, and because this contractor's done several of them, they're not going to be late. We believe they're going to be on a fast track. I'm not going to say they're going to finish early, but they should at least finish on time. Hoping that they finish early, of course. But yeah, there are certainly overage penalties.
Well, how significant? $20,000 a day?
I'm not, I'm, the contract isn't in front of me. I actually, I don't want to misquote, so I don't know the numbers. But it's, it wouldn't be good for them to, to go beyond our contract time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Maureen Schrodman, P283 East Main Street. I think many of us here can appreciate the dilemma that the water commission is in with a deteriorated system and you're trying to do patching and get it together. My question is, in terms of an overall business plan, what do you anticipate is the impact of this loan on an increase in water rates to the town?
Mr. Grant.
Mr. Moderator. Another excellent question. We anticipate a small, perhaps 3% increase, basically in one year. So in June or July of next year, when the, paying for the bonding or paying for this loan starts to come into effect, we expect to raise rates 3-ish percent. You can figure out, you know, your last water bill, I don't know everybody's criteria that bills are different for different amounts, but take your bill, it's... bills are different for different amounts, but take your bill, it's 3%.
Yes, sir. Barry Belt, 22 Lincoln Street. The more I sit here and listen to all of this, I, I really feel how important it is for this to pass. And the reason I say that is because it seems like there are no other alternatives. To give you a quick example, I've been here 32 years. About three years ago, I decided to get a full-house water filter system. I was all excited, I'm finally going to, you know, I'm going to have it put in the system instead of a filter for the fridge and a filter for this and a filter for that. The filters run about a couple hundred dollars to replace. They lasted three weeks. At the end of three weeks, it took literally five to 10 minutes for the toilet to fill up. I had no water pressure in the kitchen. Luckily, I had had it put in with a bypass and I just bypassed the filters and went back to the way it was. So whether other people have done this or not, if you're thinking of getting a full-house water system, I can just tell you that the filters and the way they look after not even a month, I just don't feel it really did anything. So to me, from listening to all of this, there just aren't a lot of alternatives. This is the point I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
Kathleen Ebert-Zawoski, I, I live on Plain Street.
What, what number?
205.
205.
Yeah. I'm just as discouraged and disappointed with the water in Norton as everyone else, but my question is actually quite different. In view of the fact that we paid for an archaeological study, I'm just curious to know, you said there were significant, I think I heard, there were significant artifacts found. Is there a way to, for all of us to learn something about this? Is there a product that's actually of historical or educational value, since we paid for it? Maybe it's interesting and we could get something out of it.
Mr. Grant?
I've been waiting for this question.
I'm waiting for the answer.
No, that's my question. Can I have just a little, I'm answering the question.
I, be my guest. I think I lost control about half an hour ago.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sitting at the Water Sewer Commission, we have these invoices, these presentations coming to us. Our archaeological experts were presenting this stuff in a big hush-hush way, and another $80,000 or $100,000 bill was due, and I said, "Yeah, stop the presses here." What exactly, "Oh, we don't have the artifacts with us." Well, that's, that's not really going to work for me. I need to see them. Well, you know, blah, blah, back and forth, and I said, "I'm, just to make sure we see them, I'm just going to hold up these invoices until we see this." Long story short, there was a little shoebox, this kind of thing, with some chips of poorly-made pottery that could have been from the high school. They didn't do carbon dating on it. There were rocks, not arrowheads, rocks that were used to make other arrowheads. Some other things the experts found significant, and I'm definitely downplaying it because I agree, I think if something were really significant and maybe a burial ground or something that, you know, we couldn't disturb, we needed to find that. And I, I respect all of that, but this was a lot of searching, a lot of money for not that much results. We have them. And then I asked for them back, because I believe like you, they belong to us. The answer we get from this MHC is, they belong to the state and our archaeological experts are the ones who are best at preserving them.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to cut us off there, because although I, I appreciate your question, I respect it, I think at this point, we've gotten beyond the purpose of the article, which is to either build the treatment plant or not fund the building of the treatment plant, so-
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
As fascinating as I, as it would be, and I'd love to see the report they generated, I, I think we'd have to address that on another time. Yes, sir, I, sir, I noticed you came from the non-voter section. Are you a registered voter in the town of Norton?
I'm not. I am from Flint, Michigan, sir.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, what, you were what?
I'm an American Indian from Flint, Michigan.
Oh, okay. And did you-
I'm not, I'm not here to talk about artifacts. I respect that. I appreciate your time.
Okay, let me, let me ask, so did you want to address the meeting? Is that-
I would very much like to address the residents of Norton as well as the speakers and the board, yes.
Okay, could, in order to do that, I would have to ask the meeting to vote for that. It, I will tell the meeting, it is unusual to hear from outside residents unless they are talking directly as a representative of a company working for us or something like that. But having said that, the decision is up to the, to the meeting. Sir, can I have your name and address so that we can list you as-
My name is Michael Finley. I live in 47 Main Street in downtown Flint, Michigan.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion on the floor to allow the gentleman to address the meeting?
A second.
A motion and a second. And sir, either way, no matter how it turns out, it's nothing personal, it's just how we do things here, so no matter whether it passes or fails, we don't want to insult you or hurt your feelings.
Thank you, sir.
And we're with you in Flint.
Thank you.
Any, the motion is to allow the gentleman to address the meeting. And I would not be doing my job if I didn't warn the, the meeting that, although we do this all the time for those who represent meetings, once you start allowing people to address the meeting, it becomes very difficult not to let others address them. I only say that because I warn you, but the decision is totally yours. Is there any discussion on the motion to allow the gentleman to speak?
What is he going to talk about?
I'm assume, all he's going to talk about is the article, because that's all I'm going to allow him to talk about. So that would be the, that would be the point. Is there any, any discussion? Seeing none, all those are favored, please raise your hands. All those opposed, the article passes. Sir, you may speak to the meeting, but I have to narrowly restrict you to the article that's under discussion and nothing else, sir.
Forgive me. Thank you, Mr. Speaker and Norton, for allowing me to be heard. Wow, I'm very impressed. Doesn't always go this well. Article three, you say, concerns whether you're financing this filtration plant or not. Yes or no? Correct?
Yeah.
So my question to you, sir, on behalf of the next seven generations of the families that you're sitting here in front of, the next seven gen, the next 140, 150 years down the road, are the current chemicals that you use to filter the water that you pump into their homes going to cause birth defects in the 20 and 25-year-old children now that are making babies?
Okay, sir, I'm going to, I'm, sir, I'm going to interrupt you because we haven't gotten to that point. We're, we're talking about building a filtration plant-
Yes, sir.
-in the town of Norton-
Yes, sir.
-to, to make things better.
I, I understand.
We, we, we're not getting into, I, I don't know that there are any chemicals used, I assume there are, but we're not getting into that minutia. The decision here tonight and what we're discussing is whether to spend $900,000 on that, on that decision.
Certainly.
And we can't get into discussions of, you know, do we know what chemicals and do we know that, we're strictly sticking to the subject.
Certainly.
Is there anything specifically you'd like to add to that narrow discussion, sir?
Yes, sir.
Go free.
The system that you're building is going to be needing, needing updates every five to 10 years for the next 150 years to ensure their grandchildren and great-grandchildren and great-great-great-grandchildren are having clean water to drink that's potable, that they can cook with. Can they do that with the water that comes out of their faucets today? That's all I'm asking. If, if not, is the filtration plant that you're looking to build going to be sufficient to do so for the next 140 to 150 years? That's all I want to know, and I believe they have the rights to know as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Grant?
140 or 150 years is a very long time. I'm not sure the useful life of this. I think it's probably more like 40 or 50 years with then remodeling and upgrades. And like I said, the towns that are but us, several of them have three of this exact plant. So in the engineer's estimates, in my layman's estimates, it works pretty good, or this system works pretty good in our neighboring towns with a very similar water makeup. Obviously, like anything, the, the duration of this depends on how it's maintained, what it treats, so on and so forth. So you spoke for a while, I'm, I'll, when I'm finished, I think the moderator might-
One more question, if I may, after I'm done.
Let's let Mr. Grant finish his segment.
So what you're, I guess, alluding to is yes, it will need maintenance and upgrades over the years. For 150 years, I'm sure it will need more than a few.
Okay. Did I answer your question, sir?
It does, and I only, it only raises one other.
You have about one left, sir.
You mentioned that the current plants in two or three other places already have these. Are they eliminating the same ground contamination that your area is?
They absolutely are. It's, it's, we, we're, we work from the same aquifer, the same water supply, literally the same, we're in, we're in the same cereal bowl.
Being from Michigan, we have sand that filters our water. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other, yes, Mr. Sweeney?
Mark Sweeney, 14 Laurel Lane. It's, it's Mr. Grant, right? Mr. Grant, how, what do our storage tanks look like right now? I'm just, I'm just curious, like off of Cottage Street, are those, are those full of iron and manganese, are you also flushing those?
We have a, good question. What the speaker wants to know is, we have giant storage tanks that we pump water to from the wells, store it, and then distribute it to the system. As recently as last night, at our Water Department meeting, we were going over the cleaning schedule for each tank. We put divers in to the tanks, obviously shut the, shut the tank off, put divers into the tank, do their maintenance, scraping, cleaning, and whatnot. So there's a, there's ongoing maintenance, it's, um-
Do you flush them completely?
I've, I've been told that the, the cleaning and maintenance of the exact actual tanks is DEP regu, required, it's regulated.
Do you ever flush the tanks where they're completely empty and then go in there?
We, we choose not to do that. This, this is a, this is kind of a live method, so you put, you put divers in, that's obviously a way to go. The problem is, when you drain the tanks, that which is remaining to the sides dries out and is more difficult to remove.
Okay.
And again, a lot of the, it's, it's a great question. The, the thing is, we do what the standard of the industry is with many industry professionals at our beck and call, so it's, it's ongoing.
So there's not a, a level of iron that's at the bottom?
There is, there is iron and manganese everywhere throughout our system, and that's what we're removing from the tanks.
Do you pump from the bottom of the tank or from the top of the tank?
Gravity forces the water out the bottom of the tank.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, what we're doing is we're going to filter, this is going to filter the water that feeds the tank. You get that?
Thank you. The gentleman there, and then we'll go to Mr. Henny. Yeah, sir, you were, you're right there, yep.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Paul, 65 Cobb Street. My question would be, is I pretty much grew up in this town, seen the town change in a lot of ways. When I was growing up, we never had a problem like this. I always heard that Norton had probably the best water in the state. Now I can't even take a shower without it looking like, you know, iced tea. So we're, we're talking about this filtration system, understand we need it, but my question would be, because there's a lot of building going on in this town, as more families move into the town, more housing being built, how long is this thing going to last?
Mr. Grant?
Mr. Moderator, another very good question. I'm going to, if I may, just ask a question to my superintendent for one second.
Absolutely.
Mr. Marshall, what's our biggest summer day? How many gallons? Our current largest summer water use, our current annual, biggest annual water use is 2.1 million gallons. This is a 2.5 million gallon treatment facility.
Okay, at the growth of the town, okay? Because let's face it, in five years from now, this town's going to be a lot bigger than it is right now. Is this filtration system going to be able to handle it?
It, it will, because there are two additional wells that aren't included on this.
Uh-huh. Okay, I've got one other question. We're going to build an industrial park down there where, what is it, Wayne River is? I mean, not the Wayne River, but the-
Old Far.
What is it?
Old Far.
Yeah. Down there by, uh-
What? Leonard Street.
495?
Okay, let's, let's try to resist the urge to all yell out here.
Okay, but it's a public water system.
Yes, sir, I'm, no, I'm fine with you, sir, go ahead.
Because we have an aquifer down there.
Yep.
I'm a little concerned about building an industrial park on top of an aquifer. Is that going to have any effect on it?
The aquifer you talk about, um-
It's down by 495.
It's the Canoe River and it weaves all, all through 495. The place you're talking about is Leonard Street, and I will address the water use of those industrial buildings. I would be more concerned with things like 246 East Main, the apartments that came in that used a lot of water. The industrial stuff really isn't going to use that much water, and there are-
Yeah, but my concern would be-
Okay, let, let Mr. Grant finish, please.
There are requirements in place to minimize the ecological impact of each unit, as governed by our current Conservation Commission, which we'll, we'll keep an eye on that stuff.
Well, I'm, I'm not really concerned about how much water they're going to be using. Is it, is it going to pollute, so the aquifer that is there?
To the best of my knowledge, no.
Well, to the best of my-
And I'm not, I'm not, I don't think we're talking about developing Leonard Street, that's-
No, but, but it is, we're talking about the aquifers and the water in the town. Like I told you, I grew up in this town.
Okay, sir, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you then, because I understand your point and I, I sympathize with what you're saying, but again, sticking to the topic of this article, we may talk about something else later, but sticking to, sticking to the topic of this article, the question is, do we build the treatment plant, do we not build the treatment plant? And that's what I have to confine the discussion to.
Okay, and my question was, in five years from now, is this tan, this, this, this system going to be able to handle, because the town is growing.
And I, I believe Mr. Grant said, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe he said yes, in his opinion, it will.
And if it doesn't, then what?
Then he's wrong.
And the other thing, oh, oh. Then, then he's wrong? I mean, come on, that, that doesn't work for me.
I, I don't know what else to tell you, sir. I, I, the, the person in charge of, of doing this is telling us that he's studied it and he thinks that it will.
Okay.
And if it doesn't, then I, you know, then we're going to have to take some other action, I think.
Well, we have a, okay, you said we have the low bid for this job. Is anybody from this company in, in here tonight that we can talk to?
Which company, you mean the company that's going to build it?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I don't know, they haven't been, well, have they been awarded the bid?
Very good, no, they haven't been awarded the bid.
Yeah, they, they haven't been awarded, they haven't been awarded the bid yet.
Well-
So it would be, you know-
Well, don't you think that company has, is going to get the job? Don't you think they should be here?
Let me, let me ask the town manager your question, and that way we'll find out.
Okay.
Miss, I guess the question is, is there anybody from the company that, that is here tonight? Do we, Mr. Grant, do we know, I don't, do they have the bid yet?
I wouldn't know that, but I was just going to ask the moderator a question. We've already authorized construction of this plant.
Right.
We're kind of rehashing that. We already, the town already voted to be, build, they, they received a presentation on this, they were shown what was going to, what type of plant was going to be built, the town meeting voted to build the plant. All this is asking to add another $900,000 to that. So I don't know why we're rehashing whether we should build the plant or not, whether the plant is going to be the right size or not. We already voted for that, we're just looking to add some more money to that.
No, and, and I understand that, but I think the gentleman, you know, raises a question that, I, I don't know that we can answer your question, I think, I think it's been answered as best it can, sir. The people in charge think that yes, it will be okay in, in five years, and that's the best answer that we can give you based on what we have. But you, we've already committed all but $900,000, as the town manager pointed out, so the question here is, do we spend the $900,000 and finish the job and allow it to go forward, or do we not? So that's what we're kind of concentrating on.
Okay, so we already hired the company to do this work, and so why aren't there anybody from this company and anyone from this company that we can talk to?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Grant?
It's, it's a little technical thing, I understand you're, you want to see the people, I, I appreciate that. We can't specifically hire them until you people authorize the selectmen to borrow the money, we return the receipt of the low bid and intent to-
Proceed.
Intent to proceed has to be, there's a whole flow, it's very detailed and specific, but they're not our contractor yet. We have to get the money in our bank account, if you will, before the state will allow us to sign them up.
Well, the other gentleman just said that we already hired these people and they've already started the project.
Okay, all right, sir, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop the discussion now. The bottom line is that the bid hasn't been officially awarded, and it would be, it would be at, at least tiptoeing around the bidding process to have someone come in and address the town meeting who hadn't been awarded the bid, and it could allow other bidders to complain, and it could get us into a problem. So the answer is that's why they're not here, and, and we'll have to kind of end it at that.
All right. But I, I mean, if you were gonna take your car to a mechanic and have your car worked on, you would wanna talk to that mechanic, wouldn't you? Until you would have...
Sir, sir, we don't have enough time in this month to discuss the regulations of the Massachusetts bidding laws. So I, believe me when I tell you, it has nothing to do with taking your car to the mechanic. You can't do that in Massachusetts on a public works project. So that'll be another subject that we'll have to discuss at another time.
Oh, I mean, that's what...
Again, I'm gonna move on, sir. Thank you very much for your question, I appreciate it. Mr. Heaney.
Dave Heaney, twenty-five Fletcher Way. Mr. Moderator, move the question.
There's a motion to move the question. A motion to move the question is non-debatable. A motion to move the question is a motion to end debate. If you vote in favor of moving the question, then we will end discussion and we will immediately proceed to a vote. If you vote no on moving the question, then we will open the floor back up for discussion and we will keep discussing the, the article. So does everybody understand what the motion is? Okay? All those in favor of moving the question and ending debate, please raise your hands. All those opposed, the motion passed unanimously, is declared by the moderator. Therefore, we will move directly to the question. As I said in the beginning, because this entered, this has borrowing, this requires a two-thirds majority vote in order to pass. So I will, we'll try to determine that, and if we can't, then we'll have to have a standing vote. Everybody understand? Yes means the article passes, no means that we don't spend the nine hundred thousand and we don't do it. All those in favor of Article Three, please raise your hands. All those opposed, Article Three passes by unanimous vote, is declared by the moderator. Article Four.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Chairman.
I move Article Four as presented in the warrant.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, can I just ask you to, to just read that motion, just, because that's a short one, so, just so people understand and we don't have to explain?
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of one hundred seventy-five thousand from free cash for the purpose of paying the remaining balance of the contract for the five-year certification cyclical program and its associated costs as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Thank you. And is there someone who'd like to just explain quickly what that involves? Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Moderator, we used to have to recertify properties in town every three years, it's now every five years. And when this article was presented seeking funding before, at that time, they, the assessors thought that they only had to fund one year of the program, but then in order to sign the contract, they had to have the full amount of the money, and that's why we're looking for another one hundred and seventy-five thousand. The total cost of this project will be four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. It's a multi-year recertification of all the properties in town that will be completed by 2020.
Thank you. Are there any questions or any discussion on Article Four? Seeing no hands, all those in favor of Article Four, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed, Article Four passes by unanimous vote, is declared by the moderator. Article Five.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Chairman.
I move Article Five as presented in the warrant.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Article Five is moved as presented in the warrant. Is there someone who would just like to briefly explain what Article Five does? We have a, everybody's looking back at me. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm told that we, we probably should just read the motion, because I guess we need to specify the funding source. So if we can read the whole motion.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of four hundred twenty-five thousand for the HVAC conversion project for the Norton Public Library, including any incidental and related costs associated therewith and further, that to meet the appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow said sum pursuant to GL dot C dot four four, seven parentheses, three, close parentheses, or any other enabling authority in the issue bonds and notes therefore. And in accordance with GL dot C forty-four twenty, authorize any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes proved herein, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes to be applied to the payment of costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount to be borrowed to pay such costs.
I'm sure that just cleared it all up for everybody, right? But maybe somebody can just briefly tell us the, the English version of that and what it's for. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Brian Stalter, seven Stonyfield Road, speaking as the, a board member for the library. The existing HVA system at the library is thirty years old. We've spent over a hundred thousand dollars in the, lost it, got it. Spent over a hundred thousand dollars in the last six years repairing and band-aiding the system. We hired an engineer, we did an as-built for the building, and it was, it was figured out that we're running about a thirty percent efficiency on the building, and we're in still constant repair. So we decided to hire an engineer, do an as-built, and come up with a new construction plan, and this is the four hundred twenty-five thousand for a brand-new heating system that has a life expectancy of over twenty, twenty-five, thirty years. And will also go from a thirty percent efficiency to ninety.
Okay, thank you. And I, I should tell everybody too, that since this article requires borrowing or authorizes borrowing, it will also require a two-thirds majority vote in order to pass. Are there any other questions or discussion on Article Five? Seeing no hands, all those in favor of Article Five, please raise your hands. All those opposed, Article Five passes by majority vote, is declared by the moderator, by two-thirds majority vote, is declared by the moderator. Is there any other business to come before this meeting? Ladies and gentlemen, before we, before we join the meeting, I just wanna say a word. Mr. Grant stood down here all night and answered some very tough questions from some people who had every right in the world to ask them and to do it, and that took a little bit of moxie, so I'd just like to have a hand for Mr. Grant, standing up to do it now. Seeing no further business, I declare the special town meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very, very good.